Make sure y'all's, everybody's mics. I now call this regular meeting of the City of Santa Fe City Council, October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five to order. Natalie, roll call, please.
Mayor Brandon Noto.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember McCamey.
Uh, excuse?
Councilmember Jeanette.
Here.
And Councilmember Dickerson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Natalie. I'll now invite Pastor Brad Drake from Day Spring Church to come up and give the invocation, and we'll do the pledges of allegiance together.
All right, let's pray. Father, we thank you for today. Lord, we thank you that you've given us this day, and we rejoice in it. And Father, we ask for your power and your presence to be evident in our city. Lord, we lift up those in need today, Lord, those that are suffering and hurting and have difficulties in their life today. We ask that you meet them where they are. Lord, we pray especially today for Hayes Gardner's family. Lord, as they laid him to rest today, Lord, his life touched so many people. And so, God, we ask that you just bring a special grace and mercy on that family and the many friends that were impacted by this tragedy. We ask that you just minister to them today and in the days to come. Father, we thank you for the leadership of this city. We thank you for the wisdom that you are giving them and will give them in the future as they seek you. We pray your blessing on them and their families and their lives. And God, that you would just continue to bless this city. Father, as we seek to follow you, as we seek to do your will in this city, God, that your hand of blessing will continue to rest on us. We thank you for it tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
A bunch of agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, we will now move into presentations and staff reports. I'm going to have to postpone the Mayor's Spirit Award. The recipient's family was not able to be here this evening, and so we'll work on rescheduling that with them. Presentation of Department Reports Finance, Mr. Rudy Zapata.
All right, well, I'm gonna start right into this.
Old habits are hard to die.
They are sometimes, but it's okay. One thing I do want to point out to our citizens, and I think I said it last couple times, but we've gotten our new city logo on here, so we're very proud of that, of the Santa Fe brand. So I'm gonna jump right on in. All right, starting with our finance department. Our sales tax report for August of this year, it is a point one percent higher than it was in August of two thousand and twenty-four. I think that we see the results of inflation coming down, so sales tax, a lot of times, goes up with inflation just due to the price of goods, so we can see that's starting to level off. So for the total of August, the city brought in three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars roughly. So our year-to-date total is four million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So this is a twelve percent year-to-date change from last year. So if you remember last month, when I came before you, it was right about thirteen percent. So it is coming down just a little bit, but I think that's due to inflation. All right, and on the next page, as you see, like I mentioned earlier...
I'm sorry, Seth, were we supposed to have copies of this, or did it get sent to us?
You were supposed to have copies of it, but they're not up here. So they're up here, can y'all see on the screen? I know that I can't from right here, but hopefully. Excuse me, but our rates are roughly the same, so we stayed the same from last year. All right, next in public works, thirty-nine segments of roads were patched. In terms of drainage, our team excavated Winston Drive from seventeen sixty-four to Ancore, which was nine hundred fifty feet. They did eleven hundred feet on Avenue L from Fourth to Canal Street, and then eighteen hundred on Murphy Road from McKay Road to the end. For paving, we did twelve linear feet of new culverts. We corrected twenty-eight linear feet of existing culverts. We had seventy-two traffic signs were either repaired or replaced. And then, one point that I'd like to brag on is one of our heavy equipment operators, Mr. Jane Belcher, completed his CDO trainer training from Texel Ty. All right, we'll move on to the city secretary. Their office had nine open records requests for the month of September. They had Lynn Luhaire, which was our code enforcement officer, so we got her on staff in September. And then we had thirty-five social media engagements for the month of September. All right, to end this off with the Resiliency Center, for August of two thousand and twenty-five, from August two thousand and twenty-four, they had a nine percent increase in the amount of counseling hours that they had for the previous year. And then, lastly, their clients increased for sixteen percent from August to September, but this is an eighteen percent decrease from last year. All right, that's all. Y'all have any questions?
Are we through on L, or? I didn't think so. You going back toward the?
The canal.
Canal.
I did, Council, I'm not sure if y'all got the email or not. Today, I did get an email from Ryan Corn on November, on November tenth at five-thirty PM at the Resiliency Center. They're having a five-year anniversary celebration, and of course, all of us are invited. There'll be refreshments and light bites, and so put that on y'all's calendar. If y'all didn't get that email, it's November tenth at five-thirty PM. That's a Monday, if y'all would like to attend. Anything else for the city manager, the department heads?
Something else I'd like to let our citizens know is that we are under a burn ban right now at the request of Galveston County. So the city is under a burn ban starting today, even though I know that we're about to have some rain coming through, but hopefully that'll alleviate that throughout the state, the issues we're having.
All right, thank you, Seth. All right, we will now move on to item five, citizens' comments. Are there any persons wanting to address council about any items not on the agenda tonight? All right, item six, business, a new business, one, consideration and possible action, adoption of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Santa Fe, Texas, approving a contract with Amerowaste for residential solid waste collection and disposal services, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. Rudy?
Mayor, Council.
Welcome.
Mayor, Council, I just want to let you know that we went through an exhaustive process, perhaps a little bit more than we should have in regards to trying and getting a new contract together with a solid waste provider. We hadn't gone out for an RFP or requested bids, even though we're not required to do an RFP. We hadn't done one since two thousand and fourteen. We discussed that in a past council meeting. And we are planning to do other RFPs or RFQs for services this year for people that, or for companies that we've had longstanding, you know, or worked with, just for good practice. It's just to make sure we've got a contract in place that it's just not an extension every year. But we had two providers, and I think they were Frontier and Amerowaste. And I think our city has just too many unique features that prevents us from other companies to be competitive here. And, you know, that's what we've discovered. So Amerowaste has provided a solid bid for us. We know that they're gonna do well again for the next several years. The contract is set for a three-year term with two additional optional years. We've extended the termination clause to a hundred and eighty days because it's really not feasible anymore to have ninety days out. You know, if we, if for every, whatever reason they want to leave, or if we want to leave, you know, we both need at least that amount of time in order to find somebody else. But, you know, we don't think that, I think we'll have a good partnership with them for the next few years. And the cost did increase a little bit. I believe it's gonna be going up about twenty percent, but that's, that's just the increase in cost for the, but that is the lowest. I think Frontier had a much higher increase, and there was just no way that anyone else was gonna be competitive. We received no bids from Republic and Best Trash, but no one else responded to our request for bids. So staff is recommending Amerowaste on this contract, and we hope you support that.
Rudy, is that twenty percent for the three months?
Yes, it's a twenty percent increase, you know.
It'll be sixty every three months?
I believe it's close to that, yes. Because right now it's fifty.
Any questions for Mr. Zapata? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I moved to adopt a resolution authorizing city manager to execute the contract in Amerowaste for residential solid waste collection and disposal services for the period of January two thousand and twenty-six through September thirtieth, two thousand and thirty. That's present.
Second. It has been moved and segmented to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the contract with Amerowaste for residential solid waste collection and disposal services for the period of January one, two thousand and twenty-six through September thirtieth, two thousand and thirty, as presented. Council, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Natalie, roll call, please.
Councilmember Schrader.
Yes.
Councilmember Jeanette.
Yes.
Councilmember Dickerson.
Yes.
And Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Motion passes. Would like to just go ahead and inform all of the citizens that part of this new contract is recycling services, and so those will be provided once a week on Wednesday as an add-on service utilizing a forty-eight gallon cart. And if residents who wish to sign up for recycling services will need to contact Amerowaste directly by October fifteenth, well, we're gonna have to change that because it's October twenty-third. In order to, in order for the procurement of carts, so there'll be a special receptacle, it sounds like, that they'll need to get Amerowaste to deliver for recycling?
I believe we have receptacles in place already. Is that correct?
The ones that currently have their bins can continue to use their bins until the carts come in.
Okay. So if they want to sign up for the recycling, they need to still call Amerowaste? Y'all will still be able to take care of them, even though it's after the fifteenth? Okay. And is that an additional cost?
Yes.
Okay, what does that cost?
If they're doing the add-on.
If they're doing the add-on.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's a price where everyone in the city gets charged for it, or there's a price where everyone's charged for solid waste, and then there's a add-on for recycling.
And the recycling is the add-on, so it's now subscription-based?
Gotcha.
Four, four dollars and twelve cents.
A month or a quarter?
It's a month.
Okay, so for extra four dollars a month, they can do the recycling?
To get the forty-eight gallon cart.
Gotcha, okay.
The ones that currently have the recycling, that'll just roll lower for them. They don't need to notify Amerowaste again?
That's a lot bigger than what we have now.
Do what?
They got like a tote right now.
Yeah.
I'm guessing they're getting like a big trash can.
Their current, their current contract, it's one price. Everybody pays. Everyone pays the same, whether you recycle or not. So...
I get, yeah, my question is, the ones that currently have recycling, do they need to notify you again also that they're gonna continue?
I would recommend they call and sign up for the social media.
Well, we'll put that out on social media and then listen that out to our communication channels as well. We're planning on doing this with the change in service. I believe that the city of Hitchcock, they recently did that as well. They, I think, changed their agreement with you guys, and they let their citizens know of the new services that they're doing, and we'll do the same.
Yeah, I just don't want people to be...
There's actually a new House bill that you have to notify. It has to be in the paper also.
Yeah, that's true, because everybody reads the paper. That's not, that's not sliding you. That's a slide at the legislators that constantly continue to subsidize the newspapers, but through state laws. But so, so if people are currently utilizing the recycling, when is that gonna stop? Under the old contract? When does the old contract stop?
I think we extended it through December.
Through the end of December. Okay, so we have some time.
So it should say December fifteenth. That's what the contract will provide, December the fifteenth, that we'll notify Amerowaste at that time. And we'll put that out through our social media and then through the paper, as she mentioned.
It could take six to eight weeks on the carts, once everyone signs up. So it could actually be recycling once, start to like everywhere.
Okay. When does, when does the next Amerowaste bill come out?
January. Comes out the beginning of December for January, February, March.
Okay. I was thinking, you know, just put, we could just put an insert in the billing, but that won't work, so.
I mean, it's easy to put an insert in there. We can do that. And I can send an email out. Not everybody has an email on, on their account, but I can send it out.
I have no doubt that Seth will make sure we do everything we can to notify as many residents as possible. We appreciate y'all. Thank y'all.
When y'all send the, the two trucks that come down the road, what do you, how much recycling is done in Santa Fe?
They probably don't have that.
I'm sure they got a percentage of...
We have two different recycle routes that run in Santa Fe. They're roughly, probably around eight tons every month.
So in Georgia, at my last job, we had less than ten percent of people there. I know this is a different community, but it was less than ten percent of people use recycling. Yeah.
All right, moving right along like a herd of turtles. Item number two, consideration and possible action, adoption of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Santa Fe, Texas, approving a contract with American Materials, formerly Vulcan Materials, for asphalt supply and delivery services, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract and related documents on behalf of the city.
So Mayor, Council, here's another annual contract that we have. We changed the contract up again to allow for an automatic renewal unless both parties disagree or have a price change. We can take that to council. It makes it a little bit easier going year over year. Vulcan seems to be the, formerly Vulcan, Vulcan, now it's American Materials. They were sold out to American Materials, same individuals. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, and they have the best price, and we've been working with them for many years. So Billy is supporting American Materials, who was the only bidder that gave us any prices. So we are recommending American Materials and Vulcan Materials for the asphalt, asphalt supply and delivery services for this coming year and for a recurring year if you so wish.
Billy, you, nobody else bid, right?
Twenty-seven.
Okay. Did we haven't checked a price from somebody else?
Well, the price went up a little bit this year, but Vulcan is the only asphalt company that's close enough to deliver to us, to pave our roads. They're at Lockwood Navigation, and the nearest one from there that would even attempt to look at us was in Brenton. When you're dealing with asphalt at two hundred and eighty degrees, and you have to put it down at one eighty, one ninety, we have to have it rolled by a hundred and seventy-two degrees. So it makes it tough if somebody's two hours away to get it out of the truck and get it down to town.
They hold the market throughout the nation, Vulcan, that will, formerly Vulcan. So, yeah, they've, they've kind of got it down.
Outside of Nippa.
Well, all right. Answer my question.
Yeah.
Sounds like we need to open an asphalt mill.
That's a big, big place, man. And it's a big hole.
All right, Council.
Move to award the asphalt supply and delivery services contract for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six to American Materials, formerly Vulcan Materials, as the most advantageous proposal to the city, and to authorize the city manager to execute the contract and related documents, including up to two one-year renewal options contingent upon annual budget appropriation and pricing remaining competitive.
Second. It's been moved and segmented to award the asphalt supply and delivery services contract for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six to American Materials, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and related documents, including a, including two one-year extensions contingent upon budget appropriations and pricing remaining competitive. Council, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Natalie, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dickerson.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Schrader.
Yes.
And Councilmember Jeanette.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Council. Item number three, consideration and possible action, approval of a two-month extension to the diesel fuel supply contract between the City of Santa Fe, Texas, and Whitner Enterprises Incorporated, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city.
So, Mayor, Council, this is the second of the annual contracts that we have. This is for fuel. We, I think, have about a hundred and forty thousand dollars budgeted this year, but when we went out for bids, we didn't receive any. The one that we were expected to receive was for Whitner, and Whitner did change reps, and so they did not get a chance to bid off for it. So we're putting an extension out so that we can go back out for a bid. They'll probably be the only ones who do bid, but it'll give us the opportunity to make sure that we extend the current prices until such time when we can bring all the bids back to council, and that would be next month.
I just want to make it clear that it was just the, the pricing that we got was not competitive. It was too much. In my book, so I wanted to put this back out for bid. And so we're extending the contract that we currently have with Whitner, which is much less than any of the bids that we received. It was much more than what we had budgeted, and so we're putting that back out.
How long we been with them?
Sir?
How long we been with them?
Ten years, but I know.
And they didn't send a bid in?
Well, they changed hands, and they had a new administrator guy. He didn't know where to go, to look on the website, to bid it.
So you're pretty confident we'll get one.
Yes, sir.
Go back out?
Yes, sir.
Billy made a phone call and...
This right there in the album, right?
Yes, sir. It's, it's Lee, it's Lee oil, like Mr. Rusty said. It's the old Lee oil.
Oh, okay, yeah, that one thirty-five.
We have emergency response from them for a hurricane with diesel within a day and things like that. So they've been real good to us.
All right, very good. Council, any further questions for Rudy or Billy? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve a two-month extension of the existing diesel fuel supply contract with Whitner Enterprises, Inc., and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary agreement.
It has been moved and segmented to approve a two-month extension of the existing diesel fuel supply contract with Whitner Enterprises Incorporated, and authorize the city manager to execute, execute the agreement. Council, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Natalie, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jeanette.
Yes.
Councilmember Dickerson.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
And Councilmember Schrader.
Motion passes. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Billy. Thank you, Rudy. Item number four, consideration and possible action, authorizing the sale of a city-owned vehicle. That's not chief. That is Captain Lino.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is our last two thousand and sixteen Ford Explorer that we have in our fleet. With the purchase of the two thousand and twenty-five Jeep Grand Cherokee, that's going to Detective Cannon, we can now outcycle the Ford Explorer that he currently has. Like I said, it's a two thousand and sixteen Ford Explorer. It was at one point on patrol. It got taken off patrol, put, given to the detective for the reason that we want to get rid of is that because it was an old patrol car, it has high mileage, a hundred and thirty-one thousand miles. The transmission's given out, the AC finally stopped working, and that's kind of why we just parked it. With our new partnership with GovDeals, we would like to put it up for auction and sell it as soon as possible, rather than that they just sit there for months.
All right, and any questions for the captain?
It is Unit seventy-three fifty-five.
Yeah. Correct. Move to authorize the sale of the, of Unit seventy-three fifty-five, a two thousand and sixteen Ford Explorer.
Second.
It has been moved and segmented to authorize the sale of Unit seventy-three fifty-five, a two thousand and sixteen Ford Explorer. Council, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Natalie, roll call, please.
Councilmember Schrader.
Yes.
Councilmember Jeanette.
Yes.
Councilmember Dickerson.
Yes.
And Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Captain Garcia. All right, item number five, consideration and possible action, adoption of a resolution designated representative and an official alternate to the HGAC two thousand and twenty-six General Assembly, Mr. Collins.
Yes, so they reached out to us for every city and county that's a part of HGAC, elects a representative and then an alternate to go to their general assembly meetings, which happen once a month. I think, I believe it's the third Tuesday of every month at ten AM. Typically... Typically, in, in many cities, it doesn't have to be this way, but it's comprised as the mayor as the representative and then the mayor pro temp as the alternate. I'm not stating that that's how we have to do it, but that's the typical way that they are done. So if y'all would like to elect a representative for HGAC and then an alternate.
Council, I would appreciate a nomination as the representative for the city if you so will allow me to do.
Do we have to say both of them?
Do you want to do it too?
No, I'm not really interested in doing it.
Rusty, you good?
I'm fine.
Want to do it?
Brandon's gonna be the.
He's gonna be the alternate.
You got an alternate. You don't, you don't want the alternate.
All right. I've moved to approve the resolution submitting design, design, designating Mayor Brandon Noto and Councilman Rusty Schrader to the City of Santa Fe's representatives. And who's this?
If you specify the representative and then the alternate, Councilman Dickerson, for us.
Okay, Dickerson, I do.
I believe that you will mayor.
Mayor Brandon Noto and alternate Rusty Schrader as the City's Santa Fe alternate representative, Houston-Goweston area council, HGAC 2026 General Assembly.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the resolution submitting designating Mayor Brandon Noto as the City of Santa Fe's representative and Councilmember Rusty Schrader as the City of Santa Fe's alternate representative on the HGAC 2026 General Assembly. Council, is there any discussion? Natalie, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jeanette?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickerson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
And Councilmember Schrader?
Motion passes. Thank you, Council. Appreciate your confidence. Consideration and possible action, item number six, casting a ballot for the Texas Municipal League Board of Directors for a one-year term, Mr. Collins.
Yes, so we will be electing our district representative. Currently, the seat is held by Friendswood City Councilwoman Sally Branson. She's doing a fantastic job. We actually have two others from Galveston County that are running as well. Mr. Tom Cruz, who's the councilman from Lake City. And then Mayor Robin Collins from the City of Kima. So we have three of those. There's some other people, I don't know them, from Harris County that are running for that district. But we will be at the TML conference next week. So if y'all will recommend somebody that we can submit that to, the deadline is tonight for the cities to submit their vote.
We've, we talked a little bit about this at the Bay Hep Mayor's Council and also at the GCMCA. And I would recommend to council that we reappoint or reelect Sally Branson from Friendswood. She's been on there and has done a good job. She's easy to get ahold of and seems to really make, make a good effort to, to be involved and make some changes. So ultimately, the vote's up to you, but Sally Branson, the incumbent, would be my recommendation.
I move to nominate Sally Branson to the TML Region 14 Board of Directors to serve a one-year term.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to cast a ballot for Sally Branson for the Board of Directors for the 2025 General Assembly is there for a one-year term. Council, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Natalie, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jeanette?
No.
Councilmember Dickerson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
And Councilmember Schrader?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Item number seven, executive session, closed to the public pursuant to Chapter 551.074, Texas Government Code, regarding the resignation, appointment, and employment of public officers or employees, possible amendment to the city manager's employment agreement. Not a resignation. Or retired.
I make a motion to amend the employment agreement between the City of Santa Fe and city manager Seth Collins to permit him to reside within the boundaries of Galveston County mainland.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the contract with city manager Seth Collins to allow him to live anywhere in the Galveston County limits on the mainland. Any further discussion, Council? Natalie, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dickerson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Schrader?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jeanette?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Council. Any announcements?
You gonna talk about the pending cancellation of the candy event?
We're gonna make a decision tomorrow on the Candy Trail, just depending on the weather. So weather permitting, we would like to still go on with this event. But if it's coming rain, I think there's a 92% chance of, of thunderstorms on Saturday. And if they're all waiting to make the decision in the morning. So if that's gonna stay, I mean, you know how it's Texas, the weather can change here and there. But, but if, if it doesn't change, then we're gonna, we're going to cancel it. And all the donations that we'll receive will get to the schools. I think they call it the Candy. Candy Fest. At the school that'll be on doors at the same time. So we'll, we'll do that. But, you know, we hope to keep this event going, weather permitting. And then as well, I know several of you will be with us next week for the TML conference up in Fort Worth. Learning and get some education from the Texas Municipal League. And then, of course, on November 1st, next Saturday, at 8:30, the 5K for the Friends of the Library family line is taking place. Those are all the announcements that I have. May I feel anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. If you haven't heard yet, October 31st through November 1st is the Tex Red Music Festival out at, in Barbecue Cookoff, out at the county fairgrounds. I think Pat Green is gonna be headlining Friday night. And then Dos Barachos, which is Roger Crager and Kevin Fowler, gonna be headlining Saturday night. So that's the local internet radio station here in Santa Fe, playing Texas country, classic country, and the Aggie Warham. And so if you haven't checked them out, they're on iHeartRadio and Live 365. But that, tickets are for sale at texredmusicfest.com. So I hope you have the opportunity to go out there and check that out. And then the other thing is on November 8th is the Santa Fe Chamber of Commerce's Heritage Festival. And the City of Santa Fe is the presenting sponsor. There's gonna be a cook-off, a kids' cook-off, kids' own mutton busting, petting zoo, vendors, craft show, all of that good stuff. So be a great opportunity to go out to the Heritage Festival. And I mentioned this at the coffee talk earlier this week. I don't know whenever it got switched from the Italian Festival to the Heritage Festival. But, you know, maybe we need to work on, on switching that back, you know? So we'll, we'll see what we can do about that. But that's the only two things that I have. Anybody else have anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.